I want to see you do that.
All right.
Good evening. I'm calling to order the Stevens Point area public school district regular school board meeting for Monday, March 30th, 2015. Roll call and verification of quorum, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yeah.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Erler?
Here.
Ms. Faxon?
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Here.
Mr. Pressley?
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Shirk?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
Eight members present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda, and I'm just going to explain to everybody what's going to happen with the agenda. It's not going to happen until later, but this will just make it a little clearer. There is an item on the agenda that has been on closed session that's been requested to be put into open session. We are going to vote on each closed session item separately. This is per legal counsel what we need to do. That way, it will be put into open if that's what the majority of the board wants to happen, and it won't affect the other items that are on the agenda. So, it's going to be a little tedious once we cross over from open to closed, but I just want to explain to everyone that that's what's going to happen. Is that good? All right. Um, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Yes?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Could we move that item up to be the first item on the closed session so that if it isn't open, if it does, the vote goes to open, it's following the open?
If it goes to open, we will address it before we go into closed session.
Okay.
And can I just ask, when are we going to vote on these? Because I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, but...
Our legal counsel said to do it when we're about to go into closed session.
Okay, so is my motion to approve everything but closed session?
No, you would approve the agenda as a whole, but when we vote to go into closed session, it's going to be voted on item A, item B, item C, CD separately.
Okay, I will make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, we have students from Roosevelt School who are here to lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Come on in.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay there, guys.
So this evening, we'd like to recognize our students from Roosevelt, and so what I'm going to do is read your names, and Mrs. Faxon will give you a certificate. Ty Portson. Adi Hopfensperger. Callie Bella. Garrett, how do you pronounce your last name, Garrett? Savageo. Savageo, very good. And Shayla Langenhahn. Shayla, congratulations. Let's give it up for our kids. And where is Mr. Bimowski? Mr. Bimowski, are you here? There we go. He's going to take a photo. He thinks. Here we go. Okay, you ready? Big smile? Okay, good. All right, so we're going to start down there with Shayla, is that right? Okay, is she your parents, Shayla?
Um, that's my dad, Jeffrey Locken.
Welcome.
Oh, you've got the speaker.
My mom, Sherry Hopfensperger.
Sherry, welcome.
Um, my mom and dad, Jim and Carrie Bagzale.
And?
Um, Portson.
There you go. Thank you.
My mom Samantha Bella, and dad Garrett Ollie.
Welcome.
My mom and dad Chad and Tricia Savageo.
Okay, welcome. Thank you very much for your support, and we're rich of your kids, so thank you. So, board members would like to meet you. Please go around, shake your hands.
Nice to meet you again. See you later. Thanks so much for coming. Thank you. Nice t-shirt. Thank you for coming. I like your t-shirt, man, that's good. Good job.
Thank you very much for coming out.
You're welcome.
Good job. Thanks. Come on. Thank you, young man.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice job.
At this time, we'd like to have recommend, or recommend, recognize two community partners. The first one is Maida, a firm with whom we have had a great partnership over the years. Joe and Karen Milonowski, want to come on in? I know that they're out there. There we go. So Joe and Karen own Maida, and I just found out tonight what the name Maida means. It's their initials of two of their children, put together, which is awesome. And so, what I want to do is to read a little bit about our partnership, and then Mrs. Faxon has a plaque for you to receive and hang prominently in your place of business. So, the owners, Joe and Karen Milonowski, have developed a wonderful partnership with the district. Both take great pride in their work, and are always willing to collaborate with us on projects such as gymnasiums, and ensure that we are happy with their work. Maida provides the district a human resources department, the music department, coaches, and athletic departments with outstanding service in providing apparel and awards, and often at a price that the district can afford because we have many of them. Over the years, Maida has offered a portion of their team apparel sales back to the district's sports teams, which is a wonderful way to support the district and contribute. You've purchased advertising in many of the district's sports team's media guides, and in addition, have purchased a large ad on their new scoreboards in the Spash Fieldhouse. And for that, we're very, very grateful for your support. Karen and Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Angel has a plaque.
This is presented to Maida Custom Apparel in recognition of the significant and profound contributions to the district for advancing the education of all its students, and for helping us to fulfill our mission, prepare each student to be successful, with deep heartfelt thanks and gratitude.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
I'll just say it all out.
Yeah. You keep it to yourself.
I don't get a mic or anything. Um, Maida is just so grateful to be located in the city of Stevens Point, and to have such a great school district that we're able to serve us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. There's a mic there, so I think we're...
All right.
For the website.
All right.
So, there you go. And then our board members would like to meet you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
For all you do for us.
Thanks again for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The second partner that we'd like to recognize is the Crime Stoppers Community Partnership. So, if Greg Swan and Sheriff Mike Lucas want to come in. So, Portage County Crime Stoppers has developed an important and lasting partnership with the district. As such, Ben Franklin Junior High, PJ Jacobs Junior High, and Spash are all active participants in the Crime Stoppers Quick 50 program. The Quick 50 program allows Stevens Point students to anonymously report weapons, theft, drugs, and alcohol use in our schools. This program has created an incentive by paying $50 in cash to students for any information pertaining to a student who brings these items to school, and has created deterrent for students wishing to violate the law. Students are often reminded of the Quick 50 program over daily announcements, and it's promoted in various classroom presentations. The Quick 50 program collaboration also helps foster relationships between the district, the students, its staff, and law enforcement. Crime Stoppers assists the district to bring public awareness to parents and social workers of problems in the school, and helps to identify areas of concern. And I know personally, having spoken with Connie and Dan Dobrods before, and now John Wallendorf and Mike Devine, what an important role that particular program has provided. But in addition to that and above that, the partnership that we have with the Sheriff's Department has been remarkable in many, many other ways, and we wanted to say thank you. And Angel has a plaque.
Thank you.
All right, this is to the Portage County Crime Stoppers in recognition of the significant and profound contributions to the district for advancing the education of all its students, and for helping us fulfill our mission, prepare each student to be successful, with deep heartfelt thanks and gratitude.
Thank you.
I just want to say, on behalf of Crime Stoppers, thank the school district and all their members for helping us out and keeping the partnership going.
And coming up in the near future, Crime Stoppers will be having, hopefully, Tip Soft, which will make it easier for people to actually get the tips in. And if anybody's ever looking to donate to Crime Stoppers, or non-profit.
I'd love one of those shirts. All right, so we're going to take a picture. Great, and then the board members will have to meet you.
Hello, how are you? Good to see you again.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, thank you so much for coming.
Oh, yeah, you've never met her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great to see you. Thank you.
Thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we have a couple more recognitions that we'd like to do this evening, is the members of the Crystal Edge Open Juvenile Synchronized Skating Team. Any members of that group here?
One member.
Parents of one member. Well, why don't you come on up, and we're going to give you the certificates. Is that okay? Wonderful. That way, we get to read while you're here. Hi, Lex Flurst. Lex, good to meet you. My pleasure. Mrs. Faxon there?
Yes, thank you.
So, the Crystal Edge Open Juvenile Synchronized Skating Team competed at the Hiawatha Land Competition in Rochester, Minnesota, on February the 8th. The team competed against four other teams, all from Minnesota, and placed second overall. We'd like to recognize the competing members from the district. So, Angel has certificates. If you wouldn't mind Lex passing those out to those folks.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Should read the names. Collette Benstein, Leanne Shavelsky, Katie Barant, Hope Relinger, Suzanne DeBott, or DeBeau. Thank you. Michaela Palbrach, Kayla Durber, Gabrielle Larson. So, congratulations to them. And Lex, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care. The next group is a rather large group that we'd like to recognize, and they're the MacDill Student Council Community Service Project students. So, all of you come walking right in. There we go. It's a blue day. So, we have the tallest in the back. That means facing this way. There you go. So, it's sort of like, you know, like Elph Arabic learner, but you're tall. There we go. Okay. So, since you're standing closest to me, your name is?
Ally.
Ally. Good to meet you. Could you introduce your two teacher sponsors?
Sure.
Right, there we go.
This is the well and...
This is the well and...
This is stitching.
And this is what?
Stitching.
Stitching, that's right. So, thank you very much to both of you for what you do. So, let me read a little bit about this group, which is pretty awesome. And Jean Keppke, our principal from MacDill is right there. The members of the MacDill Student Council Community Service Project are recognized for their leadership in their community service projects, as well as for being outstanding role models within the community. You didn't know that you were, did you? No. So, MacDill Elementary School has been awarded the 2015 Challenge Award by the Wisconsin Retired Educators Association Foundation, and is receiving $2,000 to be used for their yearly service projects. That's pretty awesome. Let's give it up for this group. This year, the students participated in the following service projects. We barely could fit them on one page. So, nice work. In the kindergarten, the students made treat bags for the elderly and families donated items to Operation Bootstrap. First grade, students created birthday bags for children through the Salvation Army, and families donated gift items for the bags. Second grade, students will be creating medallions for people who adopt pets, along with a thank you card. Families donate needed items for the Humane Society. Mrs. Faxon is one of those ladies. Third grade, students created project bags for children at St. Joseph's Hospital in Marshfield. Families donated needed items for the pediatric unit. Fourth grade, students filled treat bags with snacks to be donated to the Boys and Girls Club, and families donated additional snacks. Fifth grade, students made toy soldiers with a thank you note to soldiers in Afghanistan. Families donated money to purchase a treat-filled basket that was sent to a military unit. Sixth grade, at the end of the year, sixth grade students each paint a field stone rock, and families donate money to purchase an apple tree for the schoolyard. The field stone rocks circle the apple tree. Student council members also organized two all-school fundraisers for events of their choice. This year, it was a penny challenge for a child battling cancer and his family. Over $1,000 was raised. The second was to assist Dennis Robbie's grandson by selling candy canes. Dennis is a former principal at MacDill, and over $800 was raised. Let's give it up for this group. Now, what we're going to do is hopefully pronounce your names correctly, and hand your certificate. So, I'm going to pronounce them, and Mrs. Faxon will deliver them. Olivia DeWitt.
She's absent.
So, we're going to give them to one of the sponsors there. Nathan Sankey.
He's absent, sorry.
He's absent too. I hope I have enough. Simon Solin.
We had a...
Nathan Streveler.
Yeah, we got one.
Alexa Perry. Andrew Furkus. Hannah Harnacki.
Harnatski.
Pardon me?
Harnatski.
Harnatski, I'm sorry. If we misspelled it, we'll get you another one. Sylvia Teck. Sylvia? Ben Wondro?
Not here.
Not here.
Not here.
Haley Ligman?
Not here.
Bella Nim? There we go. Hannah Ligman? Not here. There you go, Mikey. Trent Leonard. Right there. And I think we missed two, right? So, we will get your names, and we'll get your certificate, okay? And then we'll come and embarrass you in your classroom.
No.
All right, so if you want to hold those up in front of you, and Mr. Mosketeers is going to take a photograph, and I'll make sure that you get in. You're good. Okay, so we're going to start over there, and have you introduce your parents. Are they here? Yeah, you.
My mom's here.
What is her name?
Shannon.
Okay, want to point to her? There you go, Shannon, thank you. And anybody else?
I'm back there.
Okay.
Is he back there?
We don't know.
Uh, my mom's back there.
And her name is?
Julie.
Okay. That's it? Okay.
Um, my mom's back there, her name is Carrie.
Okay, Carrie, thank you very much.
Uh, my dad's back there, his name is Jeff.
Jeff, okay, thank you, Jeff. Jeff, good to see you.
My dad's right there, his name is Jim.
Jim, welcome.
My mom's back there, her name is Vicki.
Vicki, welcome.
My mom's here, her name is Jennifer, and so is my dad, whose name is Scott.
Scott, Jennifer, thank you.
My mom is over there with my brother Liam, and her name is Carrie.
Welcome, Carrie, and brother.
Um, my mom's in the corner over there, Susan.
Susan, welcome. Do either of you two want to say anything about that group or the projects?
We're just working with a really amazing group this year, and it's been a lot of fun. And we're just trying to make a difference.
Well, you have, you certainly have. So, thank you very much. Let's give it up for one more. And just around, shake hands, okay?
Wow, thank you. You guys did a nice job.
Thank you so much.
Nice job.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you for all you do. Thanks so much.
Hi, Mrs. Faxon. How are you?
Thank you for all you do. Thank you. How are you doing?
Good.
I haven't seen you in a long time. Still, I should say. Great job. Great job, yep. And we're holding up the thing. Great job. Keep it going, guys. Hey, thank you so much. So grateful, thank you. Great job. That's a good handshake. I like that one. And your bag. Great job, great job. Thank you, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
So, we have two more recognitions, but I don't know if they're here. Mark and Carrie Vries? Are they out in the hallway? Jean? 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 Can you see if Mark and Carrie Vries are there?
Mark and Carrie Vries?
Nope, okay. We have just a couple donations that I would like to read. Kennedy Elementary School received a donation of $300 from Point Manor for their backpack program. The Stevens Point area public school district recognizes Furniture and Appliance Smart for their generous and heartfelt donation of a dryer for a less fortunate family in our community. And Ben Franklin received a donation of $500 from the Noon Optimists, who have donated the proceeds from hosting the freshman formal back to school. The district very much appreciates the contributions of our donors.
Absolutely, thank you very much. The next part of our agenda is public comments, when we have one speaker tonight, and he had actually contacted me a little earlier and asked for extra time. So, Sam, you can give him five minutes, please.
Sam Levin, 1021 First Street, Stevens Point. First of all, I'd really like the board to look again at its new policy on public comment. That's an important issue that involves the whole community here, and I don't understand why most of the other government boards, I should say, allow public comment on agenda items at the time the item is called, and the school board won't. We tried that, switching it once before, and it didn't work, and switched back. I think we still need to look at this and rectify it, and have public comment on non-agenda items right now as we are, and on agenda items when the item's called. Secondly, and this also goes into the third point I have, I had asked for an explanation today regarding a letter that was sent in 2013 about answering questions from board members. I received that copy of that letter finally, and I was told the explanation will have to wait until at least the next meeting, which is after the election. I believe I already know what the explanation will be. It'll be the politically correct answer about getting everyone on the same page. And since the way the comment on agenda items is, and I won't be able to ask the questions then, I'll ask them now, is the information I was told correct? Did Mr. Keck send the letter on the orders of the superintendent? If that's the case, and it was as innocent as I believe they are going to say it is, instead of throwing one of his administrators under the bus, why didn't the superintendent send it himself on his own letterhead? I said last year that I believed Dr. Wunderger was not the right fit for this district. I spent time last year, this past year, and I put in effort to try and get to know him and understand more the kind of man he was. As many of you probably remember, I came up here several times defending him, and saying he resigned, let him leave with dignity. There's no reason to hound him until the day he leaves. Then I was presented with this letter, and I felt like I'd been stabbed in the back, and so has this district. Was the information really withheld from board members? And if so, how deep does this go? We had a special meeting with attorneys from the district to talk about board ethics. Why not some time to investigate the truth behind this letter? The people of the Stevens Point area public school district deserve to know the truth. We deserve administrators, as well as school board members, that will be held accountable for their actions. Please answer some of these questions when you talk about the correspondence. And that brings me to the last part. I hate to do this, because this board, in the past many years I've been coming here, seems to do the opposite of what I say, so this may be the kiss of death for Jack Soscroft. But I support Jack Soscroft as the next superintendent. We keep hearing about a fresh start and a new start for the district, with a new board and a new superintendent. I admit that I do not know Mr. Arson as well as I should, and I'm not insinuating, and would I insinuate, that he's not a good man or qualified for the job. But he is part of this current administration. I do not believe that he offers the fresh start that we need at this time. He has seen how things were done here, and if that letter I spoke about is any indication, we're in trouble. Jack Soscroft has many years in education, many of them right here in this district. He knows the district. He's worked in many parts of the district, from teacher to director of technology to assistant superintendent of business services. Recently, Jack's been away from the district the past few years, and he's had an opportunity to learn from other administrators how they run their district. I've always found Jack to be easy to talk to, and I saw that he listened. As a superintendent, I believe he would be engaging and involved with both the employees and the community. I believe Jack Soscroft cares about this district, and I believe he would be the best fit to take the Stevens Point area public school district forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. All right. Next item on the agenda is Emily.
All right, this Thursday is going to be the end of the third quarter, so we're nearing the end of the school year here. April 8th, which is a Wednesday, next Wednesday, Rachel Zock is being recognized for the Janet Media Academic All-Star Award, so we're extremely happy about that. And there's going to be a banquet next Wednesday at the Dreyfus Center for her. Spash wants to congratulate the boys' basketball team on winning the D1 state championship, which I'm sure everyone's heard about. And then all the spring sports have begun, so there's going to be a lot of meets and games coming up. I believe there was a track meet tonight, actually, in Merrill, I think. And then during April here, there's going to be an unannounced code reactural at Spash. We had one in the fall that was announced, and now we have the unannounced one, just for preparation in case of emergency situations.
Thanks, Emily. Ms. Erler.
I guess not to put a till on the spot, but I'm wondering if you could provide us just with a little update with respect to the testing, and the fact that, I guess that's the latest that has occurred at the state level, which is that the testing has been put back a couple weeks because the state provider didn't have it ready.
Yeah, well, you pretty much summarized it.
I think it would be a good thing for, if board members aren't aware of it, and also if the public isn't aware of it, for them to be aware of the situation.
So, I'm not a fan of what has occurred, primarily because by all indications, this year's Badger 3-8 exam, given statewide, which costs about $12 to $13 million, is going to be a one-and-done. It won't continue after this year. So, what occurred was there was an awful lot of work done ahead of time to make sure that students and districts were ready to give this exam, which is going to be totally online. And there were issues with that, and a significant amount of money was spent actually getting ready for the exam that the state did not provide funds for. Just prior to the window opening of giving the exam, the state pushed that window back, and also eliminated a portion of the math exam, which was a total surprise to many people. Suffice it to say that the exam, I think, probably won't have a lot of credibility. Suffice it to say that the exam, I think, probably won't have a lot of credibility. And the WKCE is given for social studies and science and some other grade levels, but in terms of reading and math, grades three through eight, I don't think that this year's exam is going to tell us much, if anything, at all. And it's been, in my estimation, and I've voiced this at a couple of different presentation sessions, I think it's a monumental waste of money, $12 to $13 million for an exam that we now know has serious flaws in it, and the test maker can't deliver on the promises made. So, that's where things stand.
Angel, could I make a comment? Educational Services brought forth this item, and we had a long discussion about before this happened. And I just have to say, I'm really disappointed because I think our staff, both our teachers and our administrators and our students, were really gearing up and worked really hard to prepare for this. And to have something like this happen without the correct preparation, and then to say, well, we'll probably only do it for a year, I think it's really unfair to the people involved who actually have to get in there and do the work. And then, I understand things like this can happen, but I would think if you were going to make that much of a change from WKCE, that before you implement it throughout the state, you have a test that makes sure you know what you're doing and that you're going to keep it. So, I just want to thank all the teachers and the staff who have worked really hard. It's got to be a little disappointing. And then to hear, it's not working right, and we may only keep it a year. They're working hard enough, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you. Is that everything? Okay. Policy 166, Kim Sherick.
Last meeting, we discussed about policy 166, and I said I was going to come back and report that it's not as easy for some of us board members to get information, as Meg said at that meeting. And if you remember, Meg, you announced that when we were discussing policy 166, you had some questions about some busing issues. You called the business administrator. You were allowed to go down and sit in their office for roughly about 20 to 30 to 40 minutes, and you got your questions answered, if I remember correctly. Is that correct?
I actually went and spent a day at the bus garage.
On top of it?
Yeah. I spent a morning in the office. I toured the facility. I also went back in the afternoon and watched all of the bus drivers arrive, the shifts leave, the trans. I just wanted to get a sense of the rhythm of it.
Okay, super, and you got all your questions answered. Okay, via, because you can go down and do it during the day.
I just called and did.
Yep, you just called them, and they allowed you to do it. Well, I said I had sent an email to our business manager the night before the last meeting, and I would report of how long it took me to get the information back, okay? And again, like I just said, you kind of looked puzzled on your face, just like as if you do now. So I sent an email on Sunday, March 8th, at 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon, and I sent it to the person who does the monthly bills. I'm going through the monthly bills, and I have a hard time finding a few reimbursements for the January 2015 WASB convention. Can you give me a breakdown of all employees that went to the January convention? Please keep the breakdown with each item listed, such as mileage, miles, parking, and et cetera. If you can have it done by tomorrow night, meaning I would greatly appreciate it. Didn't put any that I needed it. Didn't hear nothing back from him, so on March 11th, I sent him another email. Is there a reason why I have not heard back from you regarding my request? At that point, I had found out via his email that he sent back, he was out of town until the 16th. So on the 16th, five days later, I finally got a response from the business manager. Kim, the information you are requesting is not simple. Now, mind you, going through the monthly bills, I do queries at work, putting in the query, you can find it. I mean, I've done different queries already. So anyways, the information you are requesting is not simple to find, as were people from many different departments, along with the board. So I would need to page through every voucher from mid-January through the present to pick out those specifics specific to the WASB convention. I cannot just print out one account number and then look up those invoices due to a large time commitment, and I was not able to get the information by last Monday as you requested, so I forwarded the request to Dr. Winiger. He informed me he would discuss with Ms. Faxton, and I was to go no further. I had thought Dr. Winiger and Ms. Faxton would then communicate with you with their decision. I don't have an email. And then, and I know where this is coming from, please remember, per board policy, all requests must go through superintendent. Yours didn't, but mine have to. And then, and I would ask for future requests to go through board policy and not put me in the middle. Thank you for your cooperation. Mind you, I have still not gotten, got the information. So your policy and the board's policy that we put together is not as easy as someone might think, because if they don't want you to get the information as simple as this, they're not going to get it to you. And you've got to remember, there's five or six of us on this board that can't take a day off of work to go down and do something like that. So again, unless I do a public records request, I'm not getting any information, am I, Ms. Faxton or Attila?
Well, the only response I have, Kim, is that I had no knowledge that Meg went to the transportation department until you said it or asked her. I didn't know that. So there would be no way for me to respond to that. Your request was handled exactly as you described it, and it is more complicated than simply doing a query. So, the only answer I have for you is we haven't had a chance to address it yet, or at least I haven't, and I'm not the one who does the query.
Well...
So I didn't know...
But you knew last meeting she did it.
No, I didn't. I did not know that Meg went to the transportation department until tonight.
Well, she said last week, last meeting, she did it. So, anyhow, I just want to let you know, because I told you I would report on how I get my information, and you understand the frustration. And if you can give me any advice of how to get my questions answered, I would love it from any board member.
I would say I understand the frustration, Kim, but I also do believe that we, as a board, are required to approve every voucher that is submitted. And in fact, the last packet of bills had a significant number of reimbursement requests from board members, from administrators, and from staff who were down in Milwaukee. Because I went through them, and I looked at them, because I pulled out, because frankly, I was trying to see that, where the costs that I had requested fit in.
I get the same thing.
And so I went through, and as far as I know, all of that information, all of the requests for reimbursement that you're seeking were in the list of vouchers that we received from the business office. And if I would have gone into the business office, I guess that's what I would have asked for.
As you know, this is the monthly bills.
Right.
And I did go through and go through them all. But if I could have access to the program, and I'm no computer whiz, and if the program can't do it, we need to upgrade our technology, people need to upgrade the program, because there's no reason... Again, and again, I'm not saying that someone can't do their job, but however, six days later, you can walk in with no permission from anybody else on the board, you can do that without anybody else's knowledge, but yet, I'm still waiting for information almost nine days later, if not even more.
But the information's right there in that packet, Kim.
Not all of it. There is people that have gone to there. Again, it doesn't make a difference. If it's all in here, I should have been able to get it.
Anything that we've paid, anything that has been paid or that has been approved, as I understand it, through the business office, was in...
Is it on one page in there?
...all the board members got.
Is it on one page in there?
No, it's not.
Okay, it's on multiple pages.
Yes, it is.
So one little report would have taken, I'm going to assume, and I'm not even going to say a time, less time than you spent down in their office. I'm going to say it that way. So frustration, tone, I don't care, take it as you may. This is why, this is how I am, and I will continue to be this way. And if any student is getting treated this way in the district, they need to step up for themselves, and their parents need to.
Finished?
Not really, but for tonight, I am. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Next, we have my report, the introduction of candidates, is the first thing I'm going to do. Sam, we saw speak. He is one of the people running for board. Judy Ranow, actually, I spoke to her today. She apologizes, Judy is a teacher. She teaches classes on Monday and Wednesday nights, which is why she has not been able to be at any of these meetings. But she did an interview today, to the best of my knowledge, and is excited to be a part of this if she is so elected. Otherwise, it's Meg Erler and myself. And this is the last meeting we have before the election, the last board meeting, there are committee meetings. The Port Edwards Consortium, I just wanted to say to board members, this is what we did in Rapids, and it's eight districts. And they're smaller districts, we're the largest one, and we're the furthest north. We're just getting together, we're brainstorming, we're coming up with... At the last one, they had several political, like Katrina Shanklin, that sort of people there to talk to, to ask questions to, if we wanted to. I don't know if they will all do that. This one is in Port Edwards. It is April 20th at 6:00 p.m. Everyone is invited, but they need to know if we're coming. So far, only one person has RSVP'd. If you can make it, April 20th, 6:00 p.m., we can carpool down there. We will likely host this soon. It's something we're trying to do, probably bimonthly, meaning every other month, not twice a month, and get it going again. It's something that used to exist four or five years ago. We're trying to get it moving again so that we just have a more cohesive voice in our area that we're represented by.
Did you say that's in Nacoues?
Port Edwards.
Thank you.
Angel, can I interrupt you while I apologize?
Sure.
Since you were talking about the candidates in our last meeting until the new vote, correct? Or do we have one more meeting?
We have one more meeting.
Sorry, then I'll wait for them to do it, so...
Tour the facilities. Attila provided us with a list, which is right here. There is one week where it is on Monday and Friday. That's the only one where it's doubled up, because we're trying to get through, I think it's 17 different locations, is that correct? So that's why there's one doubled up there at 7:00 a.m. Please just be there. The principals will walk us through. The videotapes are already in progress, so that the public can go on the website, and you can see what it is that we're going to be seeing. And this is so that we have a knowledge base before we seriously start talking about the Consolidated Task Force. As many board members that can be there as possible. I tried to honor what your requests were. Hope we can start getting through this, so your schedule's in front of you. Update on superintendent search. The board has brought two candidates forward, and we have done listening sessions, we've done an online survey, we've done everything we can to try to get as much input as we can, and tonight we'll go into closed session and make our decision. So, thank you, everyone who participated, who filled out a survey, who called us personally. I personally have received lots of calls, and I know others have as well. And so I'm grateful for the input that you've given us. And that's it. Superintendent, sir.
The only thing I want to mention is the schedule, either on a Friday or a Monday that you have in front of you. And as Angel mentioned, the principals will be there, and you have a tour relative to the recommendations of the Consolidated Task Force, it won't be a tour of the entire facility. So if you want to attend, please feel free. And as Angel also said, we're making progress on the video tours that are being posted on the website. Other than that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Attila? All right. Let's move on. We have the consent agenda, which is one, two, three, four, five, six sets of minutes. So, does anybody have any corrections or anything they wanted to say before we make a motion? All right. And I have a motion, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second. Discussion?
There's just one of them that still needs a correction, I believe.
Okay, which one is it?
It's the Monday, March 2nd. And it's the afternoon one.
Okay.
And it's just the first page, the first sentence called order. That afternoon session was called to order. It wasn't called to order at 9:00 a.m.
Oh, okay.
So it was called to order, probably, I don't know, you'll probably even...
Right. So do you want to...
So, I don't know if we want to pull that out and do that separately, or...
Or if you just want to amend the motion to include with revisions, make them get that time in there.
What would you like to do, Meg?
That's fine.
With revisions?
Yeah. I will make an amendment to the motion to include that one revision that was...
I'll second that.
For the Monday, March 2nd.
All right, so first, we need to vote on the amendment, and that's adding the revision. So, roll call vote on that, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and now, any other...
Nine to zero, it carries.
Anything else? All right, then, vote on the original motion, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes. Sorry.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right. Now we are on to educational services. There hasn't been a committee meeting since then, so we don't have a chair report, but we have two items underneath. Who's handling those?
Just the recommendation for second reading for the purchase of textbooks and instructional materials.
I can make the motion if you want. Move to approve the purchase of the National Geographic English Language Learner and the French Language Resources, as was presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
I just have one question. This is all budgeted for.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
And then we have a Badger exam presentation.
Part of what I had asked Keel and Dave to do is to put together a presentation that was similar in nature to the one that was given at the consortium that we heard, but also just to make it unique to our district. And I think that Dave can speak more specifically about the most recent issue regarding Badger 38 that Meg brought up earlier. So, Dave and Keel, are you going to use the overhead?
We debated that, because we think we probably...
Yeah, we have it all.
Could you just talk about it?
Sure. It's up to you.
We don't need it, again.
I can, because the super brought it up, I can begin with the Badger 38. There have been three changes, two that were indicated in the memo that you received, and one that's happened since the memo. The two that were indicated in the memo, as you may recall, prior to this, we talked about the interactive, the computer-interactive part of the language arts and mathematics section. Here about a month ago, the state took the interactive part off of the test, meaning that when a child would answer a question, the next question would become more difficult or more challenging or less challenging based upon what they answered. That search engine, or that driving engine that did that, the testing folks said it doesn't work, or it's not functioning correctly, and they did not want to stress the state of Wisconsin out by having that section of the test being run. So they really changed it into a static electronic version of the WKC with different kinds of questions. The second change that occurred, on top of the mathematics and English Language Arts question part, there was also a performance task piece, where classroom teachers would take students into the classroom, would give them a common classroom experience, of which they would have to go within, problem solve, and have a performance task based upon what they got in the classroom. The English Language Arts piece was taken off of the table because it was not ready to conduct, and they left the mathematics version. So currently, what we have in the Badger 38 is the two sides, the English Language Arts side and a mathematics side of the questions, which are static tests now, different questions that are based on the NAEP standards, the national standards for graduation performance, and the performance task mathematics. The other thing that just happened last week is that the test start date was today, of which we were going to begin with the eighth grade, then seventh grade, and go down to grade level at a time, one week each, and then have some time at the end for makeup. They postponed the start of the Badger 38 to April 13th, which has condensed everything to the end of the year. We're not sure what will happen. This came out from the deputy superintendent, I want to say, Dr. Winiger, maybe midweek last week. The deputy superintendent sent an email out to the state saying that it was postponed until April 13th. So that's the status. Now, I also mentioned in the memo, which I think is really noteworthy, I think that we should all recognize the fact of how much effort that our technology department has put into this, a huge amount of effort. Because it's a technology-driven test, is they had to create the schedules, they'd gone out to the staff and shown the staff and the students how to navigate around the test items with the new Chromebooks. They have gone to the, again, to the schools and done practice tests. They've had their people available for driving this entire thing. They've done exemplary work, along with the principals and staff, who have been the ones that have been working with the kids. So hats off to the technology department for stepping up and doing fine work around this challenging time in our state testing protocols. That's the update on the Badger 38.
Thank you.
This won't be used next year?
We don't know, right? Of course, it's a political rhetoric. The governor has said, how do you say it, one-and-done?
Yeah, I mean, the DPI is making plans that it's not going to happen.
Right. So we haven't told officially. We don't know. There was some rhetoric at one point, I heard it on NPR, that there was going to be a state report card next year, but they took that off the table. So we don't know really how that's going to play out, right, and what it's going to And what it's going to look like. And I want to say, I don't know, I think I heard the super say that the price tag of this is in the millions. Thirteen million dollars, maybe?
Twelve to thirteen for the Badger and seven to eight for the ACT.
Right. That has been spent.
Will the WKCE come back?
Well, we still had the two parts of the WKCE, the Science and Social Studies, which, and we just got the results. We're starting looking at them now. Were delivered in November of this year, right? And then, the Language Arts and Math were taken off. So, we don't know what it'll look like. We don't know if they'll go back to a paper and pencil. We don't know. The deputy superintendent has said that nationally, there are issues in other states with the original, the creation of an online version of the state test, and their states are having the same kind of issues that we're having. So, I don't know. I suppose we can look at it as a way to get ready to take an electronic test. So, there's some positive sides to it, right? If you can find one, right? So, that's kind of where it's at. So, we really don't know what's going to occur. But we shall keep you updated on the play-by-play as they occur.
Any questions for Dave? Or Keel?
I just wanted to add that the ACT portion of the testing has gone pretty well. There have been some changes this year also. The ACT Aspire, which is the early-level testing for ninth graders and 10th graders. And again, the technology department, the teachers have done a lot of work to test that equipment and make sure it would work. And that was done online and done pretty successfully. And the ACT was done at SPAS for all 11th graders, and that also went very well. But again, that test was left paper and pencil, the 11th grade ACT. They made an announcement that the spring of last year, that they weren't ready to try to go electronic with something as important as the ACT. And wisely so, from some of the other things we've seen. I think that's something that we're glad has stayed paper and pencil so far. So, of the 11th graders at the high school, we only had five students that were unable to take the test out of the entire 11th grade class. So, it was a very good turnout, and they did a great job up there planning for it. Jen Reese and her team, Mike Devine, did a lot of work to make that happen.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to the Board, a final thought on this. Part of the consortium we talked about, we are extremely fortunate here to have a director of technology, to have Sentry, who's provided us with laptops. A lot of smaller districts have sunk unbelievable amounts of resources into having to get laptops or Chromebooks for every one of their students in order to take this exam. That's a one and done. So, we are getting hit. We are not getting hit as hard as the smaller districts. And that's part of what we're talking about when we get together. The kinds of struggles they've been having. A lot of them had to upgrade their bandwidth just to do these exams, and now they're not going to have to do them again. So, been a very frustrating situation for everyone, but it's part of why we're getting together, to create a voice to be heard. Thank you. Yeah, Meg?
I just also, I wanted to comment on that participation for that ACT. I mean, that is incredible. I mean, that really demonstrates that our students wanted to take that test and saw it as the opportunity, you know, which it is. Because ultimately, it was covered by the state. And I just think it's a great credit to the SPAS staff and you, and the students and their families for all showing up and taking that, because that's what the series does.
Chris?
And also, a thanks to the administration who put in the pre-test for the ACT, because I believe our scores went up, and we had a lot more participation because of that. So, I think that's really important and important to mention.
Thank you all very much. All right, Student Services. We have a revised memorandum of agreement with Ministry Medical and Space in elementary schools. Greg?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as we look to expand upon and take advantage of the recent flexibility given to us by the Department of Health Services, we have been approached by Ministry Medical Group. And they are requesting an opportunity to further serve the students of the district by placing a couple of mental health therapists in two of our elementary schools. So, this is part of the pilot program that you approved at the beginning of the school year. And as I've come back to you now several times, we are hopeful that by the end of this year or the beginning of next year, that we will have all of our schools in the district covered by mental health therapists. So, we're getting a couple of schools closer every time that I come to the podium. And I'm happy to report that I will be coming back to the podium again soon, because we've got another partner who is stepping forward soon.
This is great. This is very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Meg. Any questions for Greg?
I guess my question is, how many mental health providers are out there yet that have not stepped forward?
Well, we're starting to see providers repeat now. So, providers that are currently in the schools, in some of our schools, are realizing the tremendous opportunity to serve students. And so, they are coming back now and saying, you know, I think that we can increase the FTE. So, I think this is our fourth provider. And I think that we have a current provider who will be coming back to the table and offering to bring more FTE to us.
I'll make the motion to approve the attached agreement for use of spaces presented above and attached.
Second.
Any further conversation, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right. And then, we have a preliminary 2015-16 CISA V contract.
Human Resources?
Oh, I'm sorry. I crossed it out. All right. We need to approve recommendations for employment. I need a motion to move forward, please?
Move to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
I'll second.
If I can just make one comment. At the bottom of that first paragraph, A1A, it says the interim, excuse me, the salary band for high school principals is 95 to 111. It should be 115. That's a typo.
When we came here today, we have the contracts now in front of us. I believe one is for the intern position. And if I'm reading this correctly, it says from March 23rd, 2015 till June 30th, 2015, which I believe does match the recommendation. However, the second contract, and again, if I'm reading this correctly, it says for one year from July 1st, 2015 till June 30th, 2016, which does not match the recommendation. That one says August 1st, 2015 till June 30th, 2017.
Well, it does match, actually, Kim. If you look at the contract under A term, the second sentence reads, "The administrator agrees to work August 1 through June 30." So, it's an 11-month contract, but the contract period within, that it falls within, is July 1 to June 30. So, legal counsel advised us to use that phrase, excuse me, use that sentence in the contract. So, they do match. The contract period covers August 1 to June 30, but the calendar year that it covers is July 1 to June 30.
I think the question you're asking is, the memo refers to 2017. Contract's 2016. That's the question.
Oh, I apologize. It should be 2016.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kim. I thought you were referring to the August, July day.
Yep, the year.
Yeah.
So, the recommendation.
It's 2015 to 16.
The recommendation should only be for the interim, and then, one year.
An interim for the remainder of this year and an interim for next year. And I apologize that the memo indicated 17. It should be 16.
So, do we need to make a motion to amend the?
No, her motion was just to approve the recommendations for employment.
Personnel recommendations, which is the contract. You're actually approving the contract.
And are those going to be in the packet now for people?
Yes. And we apologize that they weren't.
They'll go online. Bye, then. Didn't see me.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. Now, we're on to general.
So, every year, we have a contract with CISA V for services rendered. We meet with CISA V, the administrator, as well as the, generally, the business manager for CISA V. We go through the contract, line item by line item, make sure that it is what we need. And it's always a tentative contract, because the state budget isn't formalized until later. But, and it indicates that in the contract, in the information itself. Amounts listed are based on current information and projected services to special ed students in your school district. Adjustments will be made when final information is available.
Any questions on that?
I guess I have a question. I thought that the governor's budget was looking to eliminate the CISA's.
No, just reduce the amount that they get, not to eliminate them. Yeah.
And is this, the amounts that are in here, are these, do we have these budgeted?
Yes. And they're fairly accurate, Trish, but they're not absolutely finalized. So, but yeah, they're budgeted.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
No.
We do not.
Okay, I'll move to approve the preliminary 2015-2016 district CISA V contract for services as presented and attached.
I'll second. All right. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right. Next, we have our future board meetings listed and committee meetings. These will be the last committee meetings with the current sitting board. And I think that covers everything. We're going to move into the closed-section portion. And like I explained at the beginning, I'm going to re-explain this a little bit. First of all, letter A, which is a long paragraph, and I'm not going to torture you all by reading it, in that the date on the bottom says 2013-2014. It is, it was supposed to be 2012-2013. Therefore, we cannot have that discussion because it was posted incorrectly. So, that will not be discussed at all. You can just eliminate letter A. B, C, D, and E, I'm going to read individually, and we are going to have an individual board vote about going into closed session about each one.
And Chair, we can eliminate letter C.
Awesome. This just gets better and better. Okay.
I'm going to interrupt you just for a second, and then I apologize again. Do you have any of the forms or whatever for requests for agenda items? Because I would like to request for the Board to start looking at our special education staff, of why they're leaving and why they're staying. So, I don't have any of those forms.
I can, I have some printed I can give to you before you leave tonight.
That would be great. Thank you.
Not a problem.
All right. Anything? Nope, no problem. Okay. So, the first one I'm going to read, and then, we're going to do a vote on that one alone. If any of these, because someone has requested that this stay in open session, if it does remain in open session per board vote, we will discuss that before we go into closed. Just being clear. All right. So, the one in question is letter E. It's a long paragraph, but I have to read it all.
Are we starting with the first one? Are you skipping to E?
I was going to go to the one. Doesn't matter to me. I'm happy.
You're going to vote on them each individually, so you should go in order.
Okay. All right. So, letter B, 19.85, parent 1, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, specifically negotiations with AFSMI, SPAEA, and Teamsters. Roll call vote going into closed session.
Motion in a second.
Oh, I need a motion in a second.
I'll move. We go into a close for 11B.
Second.
Any questions? Okay.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
I would prefer to do this in open session, but no, it can be done in closed. No.
Ms. Totten?
I would prefer this be done in open, even though I know it can be done in closed. No.
Motion carries, can we discuss in closed session, 6 to 3?
Letter D, 19.85, parent 1, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, specifically the superintendent search candidates. I need a motion, please.
Move to go in closed session for item 11D.
Oh, any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
I prefer to do this in open session, but no, it can be done in closed. No.
Ms. Totten?
I prefer this to be done in open, but no, it can be done in closed. No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 3. We're discussing closed.
Okay. Letter E, 19.85, parent one, parent F, considering the financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel or problems, or the investigation of charges against specific person, except where par B applies, which if in discuss in public would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically the reputation of board members. 19.85, parent one, parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved specifically to review legal opinion regarding board member access to documents, related board member conflict of interest issues, potential litigation arising out of such conduct, and strategies for dealing therewith. I need a motion for this one.
I think you need to read it.
Does it matter if it's open or closed?
No, I don't think so.
Do you want me to read it?
I don't think so.
I will make a motion so we can discuss this one in open session.
Second.
Okay. Any, do you want to expand on that for the release instance? It was your request?
No, I just...
Okay. Roll call vote. This is a request, this is a motion for it to be in open, not in closed.
I guess I just want a clarification so that the, my understanding is in this situation, the individual would have the right to have it in closed. I just want to make sure that Lisa, you are...
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just, I'm sorry. Maybe it's because I'm not feeling well tonight, but our vote is to have this in open session.
Correct.
And you want, Lisa, you want this in open session.
Correct.
You're requesting this, although Alex has made the motion, but it's regarding your, some issues.
No, Alex didn't make it, but that's okay.
Kim and Jeff did, but that's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. You can tell. I'm taking cough medicine, so, okay. So if I vote yes, then it's going to stay in open session.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. I just want to be very clear about that.
Okay. Mr. Kokonoski?
The way it was?
Yes is to stay in open, no is to do it in closed. Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero to discuss in open session.
Okay, so letter E is now an open-session item, and we will address it before we go into closed session. In board packets, there is a legal opinion, and I've had Amy run off 10 copies. If it's not enough, we can run off more, but knowing, anticipating this may go into open, I had her do it for the public.
And then it'll go online?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do members of the public, do you want us to take a five-minute break so you can look it over? Would that be helpful? All right, we're going to do a five-minute recess. We'll reconvene 7:45. All right, we're back in open session. So I will lead this discussion by saying, I'll just explain the process that we took to get to this point. Lisa submitted a request to me through email to have our attorney provide a written opinion on if she, when she is recused, but has not left the room, if she can receive documents in the room. That was March 6, I believe, if I kind of looked through them today. She, I left it in his hands. She reinquired about 10 days later, and I sent a letter and then gave him a phone call and just said, you know, "I hope this is still on your plate. It's something you can get done." And he just said, "It's a much more complicated issue than anticipated. It's going to take a bit." He provided me with a draft of this on Monday. When I saw the length, I was expecting a page or a paragraph. When I saw the length of it, I realized that it was going to be a pretty significant discussion because it potentially could affect someone's reputation. That's why it was in closed session, but the option is always Lisa's to keep it in open, which she has requested. That is why the documents were not provided to the media or the public until now. That said, Lisa, do you want to...
I mean, the only thing the public needs to know is, from the question, you can tell that there are certain, there have been administrative staff that believe I don't, or I should not be receiving written communication or written information that the rest of the board is receiving. There are board members who concur with those administrators, and to make sure we were all on the same page, I requested this. We've gone through this, not about the written, about the whole recusal thing and the conflict of interest, the whole thing. We've done it about four years ago, and unfortunately, it just keeps seeming to come up. And that's all there is to it. I don't, I mean, I wanted the attorney's opinion.
All right, so you've read through the information.
Correct.
Is this correct information that's in here? The information that was supplied to us by the attorney? Because there are specifics in here, I believe, that examples or something. Because I'm just wondering, you just asked for the documents, but there's a lot of stuff other than documents in here.
Well, because I can't talk about what happened, what transpired in closed session, I can't really answer that, Chris.
Well, this is in open session, though. I'm not asking you to...
No, but if you ask me some...
I'm not asking you about anything in closed session. I'm saying if this document right now from the legal, it seems like a long document, did you, do we have any idea how much time was spent on this? Like, how much money did we spend legally?
I don't know. Initially, someone who handles this more frequently than Mike, his name is Doug Witt or Doug White, he did the research, and then Mike compiled the letter from Doug's research. I have no idea how long it took. I didn't, we haven't received that bill yet, and I did not ask. I can if you'd like me to.
I would like you to.
And, Chris, you were around when this question was asked, and we got a legal opinion about my whole thing. The administration was here, and yet what transpired in closed session, you yourself should have known was inaccurate, shouldn't have happened. So there, the issue was that this board...
Okay, I know, I didn't understand what you, I know where you're going with that.
Okay. This board, not all these members, but this board has gone through this before. There should have been no reason to have to do this had the information that was previously given from a legal opinion been passed through. Now, our administration knew what was right, maybe they forgot. I don't know. I'm not going to, but we are not going to waste the board's time. At least, my hope is that we're not going to continue to waste the board's time. Get a legal opinion, be done with it. That's my hope.
And I would agree with that, and I'm the board member, I guess, who has been the most vocal about this. I believe very strongly that when you recuse yourself from a closed session that involves negotiations with the SPAEA, which your husband is a member of, and he is a teacher, and so the decisions that are being made in that room directly impact the financial state of you as an individual. It is a clear conflict of interest, it's a legal conflict of interest for you to participate in such discussions. I disagree with you that the original opinion that this board received provided a definitive statement that it was legal for you to be in that room. What that opinion said was, it is unsettled law in the state of Wisconsin, and it would have to be determined on a case-by-case basis, based on what actually occurs each time in that room. But I, as a board member, feel inhibited in my participation in discussions in closed session about contracts related to your spouse when you are in that room. I believe that you, by your mere presence, have participated, and I also believe, based on this letter, that there are some instances where there's been some confidential information that has left closed session. And that's a concern for me. This letter right here reads, given the strong, this is our attorney, this is our board's attorney, given the strong public policy underlying the statute, it would be our recommendation that Ms. Totten leave the room during such discussions and agree not to have access to related materials. Because if at some point, an objection is filed, and it is determined, and it very likely could be determined, that you have participated, at a minimum, the votes that occur when you're present could be void or voidable if challenged in a taxpayer suit, which is our contracts with our teachers. I just, I don't, I can't comprehend how you can stay in the room when we're discussing the contract that involves your husband's employment. It's not right, and it shouldn't occur, and our attorney is saying it shouldn't occur. So I agree with you. I don't think we should need to be discussing this on and on, but you persist in staying in closed session when we're discussing matters impacting your personal financial situation. And that's, it's a felony under state law.
So, oh, I'm sorry, Kim. Go ahead. Well, I'm just confused how, if you've read this, you didn't read the whole thing.
I'm reading what our attorney's recommendation is.
Oh.
That's what's important, because we, as a board, need to protect the board and the school district and the labor contracts that we're entering into on behalf of the board.
Okay. Can I just ask a question? And I'm sorry, my, not, I can't speak loudly. Lisa, based, you've read this, you've read this probably a couple times now, right? Since you've read this, what's your position on, how are you going to deal with this?
My position is not changing.
You're going to stay in the room, and you want to receive documents. Is that right? And so when we go into closed session to talk about teacher contracts, specifically, not specifically, but all the teacher contracts, your intention is to continue to stay in the room and receive those documents?
I already answered that. Yes, Trish.
I guess...
I mean, if you ask it a million different ways, it's not going to change.
I'm not going to ask it any other way, except to say that it puts all of the teacher contracts in jeopardy.
If I'm reading through this, only if she participates. When she recuses herself and moves away from the table, does she participate? And we can't say that, you can't answer that because it's in closed session. But I read this, and I had someone else read this so they could read it to me in layman's term, I guess, and what she's done for the last four or five years is exactly what they're suggesting that they do. Also, since you read your paragraph, I do want to read a paragraph, and it doesn't have a page number in there, and I'm just going to read the last, it's a run-on sentence, but, "Ethic code requires such a board member to physically leave the room, and we would discourage other board members from attempting to force that action." So by you keep repeating it, we know...
No, physically force, Kim. It's physically force.
Mentally or physically, it does not say.
It's physically force.
It doesn't, your interpretation is, but mine is not. And maybe someone else who's on this board is not. So I think we need to let this drop, and regardless how much this cost, this was the board that put this on the cost of the taxpayers, not Lisa, what someone was trying to get at, so.
I didn't, I didn't put it on anybody. I said, "The cost." Board, I didn't say Lisa put it. I said, "How much did it cost?" She asked for the documents, and because it's complex, if it weren't complex, we wouldn't have this much time and these many pages. And I guess my concern, Lisa, is this. Over the last few years, there have been comments made about items from closed session being leaked, okay? This is not saying that you did that. It's out there. My concern is this. If you're not in the room, you don't have the information from that meeting, there is no way that you ever could be connected unless someone gave you the information and you shared it. But if you don't have the information, you can't accidentally or on purpose share it because you haven't attended that meeting. I believe you put the rights of this board in jeopardy and the district in jeopardy because you are, you do have someone who's going to benefit from that. Okay? And if someone, if someone files a complaint, okay, you put the rights of the board, and we govern as a board.
Then when I made a motion to have an investigation of stuff that's been released from closed session, why did you vote no?
That's unrelated to this.
It maybe wasn't.
It's unrelated to this.
If it was someone that thought it was closed-session information being released, it could have been put on there then.
Right.
You just can't prove that who did it.
Alex?
My concerns are not with an individual who states the reason why they're accusing themselves. That is great because it becomes, if there's a leak, yes, we can point the finger if it matches up. That's great. My concern are the individuals on the board or any board who does not recuse themselves, who keeps their connections silent, does not tell anyone, and does talk outside to these individuals because it happens. Those who voted against investigation are most likely involved.
Alex, please be really cautious about what you say. That was pretty accusatory.
The recusal is not voting. I don't vote. But so anyways, there is no way on this planet I'm going to be able to change your minds. It's not going to happen, and vice versa. So we can continue this conversation, or we can accept the information that was given from the attorney. Our administration can provide me the information that I am legally able to receive. So no more of the, "I didn't print you or you shouldn't have."
It's inappropriate.
So.
I'm going to, I want to note, and I'm going to note, and I want to read this because this is, this is our attorney's advice.
And I want this in the packet and so...
And this is in the conclusion.
Yes.
"If she," meaning Ms. Totten, "elects such access," so you do have the right, the opportunity to have access to documents and information in closed session applicable to the business from which you have recused yourself. "If you elect such access, she is by no means insulated from criminal prosecution for participating with respect to matters in which she has a direct or indirect pecuniary interest. Should a prosecution for such conflict of interest occur, the result may be the voiding of one or more collective bargaining agreements and other affected contracts, as well as potential individual liability of the other board members to replenish the public purse." That's what I've been saying all along. It is an unknown. Every time we go into that closed section, every time we go into a closed session, you go in, there's the potential you're participating. I believe, because I feel an impact of your presence, that you, by being present, are participating. Requesting the information, I think, is another example of you participating. You want the information that you've recused yourself from being a part of because you have a direct conflict of interest under Wisconsin law. So our attorney has indicated to preserve the collective bargaining agreements, the safest way, the best way, as well as to shield all members from individual liability, as well as you from liability for felony, that the board, at a minimum, and possibly in conjunction with other actions that it may wish to take, create a subunit for the purpose of negotiating with the SPAEA, and possibly with respect to other bargaining units, if strategies and fiscal authority associated with attempting to settle collective bargaining agreements in the other bargaining units may affect the strategies and fiscal authority applicable to SPAEA negotiations. So that's what our attorney's recommending to do. You shouldn't be in there. We're discussing your husband's contract.
Does anybody have anything else they want to add?
One of the things I'd like to have, and I may have to fill out that form, I want something brought back, and that's these additional steps that our legal has said we could do.
Okay.
Okay, because I think we should discuss what kind of legal steps we could take or should take, or what else we could possibly do.
This conversation done? Or do we have anything else that wants to be added? All right, so we are now going to move into closed session. The board has already voted on the two items. I just have one more sentence to read. Do you have it? All right, "We will reconvene in open session for further consideration of impossible action regarding closed-section business, including action with respect to board options in regard thereto." We are in closed session.